This meeting is called to order. This is the November 12th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Moving to our agenda, could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22nd regular meeting and the October 22nd off-site meeting.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, announcements, we got a bunch, let's see if I get them right. The open space and recreation plan survey is now online. The survey is being conducted to understand the needs and concerns of Shrewsbury residents regarding the town's open space and recreational facilities. It was last updated in 2012. The survey takes a few minutes to do, I did it the other night, and the deadline to take the survey is December 15th. So, for those people who would like to be involved in that, have some input in it. The proposed town center rezoning, the town is currently in the process of rezoning the town center area, actually coming up with proposals for rezoning. The committee is looking for feedback, there'll be two public forums to be held at the Shrewsbury Library. One is November 19th at 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m., and the second is December 11th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, people who have an interest in that, they're more than welcome to attend and give their opinions also. If you go onto the website, there is a whole host of items related to that. One other item that's very timely, normal trash and recycling collections this week, Veterans Day week, have, they're remaining as the normal schedule. We did not delay because of the holiday, so whatever your normal day is, it's going to stay that way this week. And I believe, finally, there's an electronic and appliance recycling event, November 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at St. Nicholas Church, 34 Gold Street. This happens about once a quarter, and it's a good time to get rid of your electronic appliances, your electronics and appliances, and everyone is welcome. So, other announcements? Yes, Mr. Samia.
Sure. The Board of Selectmen will be holding office hours on Saturday, November 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Shrewsbury Library. We'd expect that there'd be additional hours announced after this date, and we'll post those on the website, but right now, for the maiden voyage, we'll talk about November 23rd, and all are welcome. And not sure exactly which members of the board will be there yet, but it'll be an opportunity to hear any concerns, questions, or just talk to anyone from Shrewsbury.
Okay, great, thank you. We should post that, just in case.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any announcements?
Just want to mention that several members of the board were there as well today, the home heating, the home heating group met today and reviewed plans for the winter. What started off as a lot of organizations several years ago now is pretty much one meeting a year, just to make sure we're in place. There is measures in place, should people run out of home heating oil, through the generosity of SOAR, a nonprofit group that's fundraising for that purpose. Variety of town agencies, nonprofits, et cetera, meet today to try to coordinate how they will handle any kind of heating issues. The quick thing we heard was, as far as costs for people with oil, the expectation is similar, even possibly a little less than last year.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, item four is the town media's report, Mr. Mizikah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throughout the course of this fiscal year, we've attempted, through a number of different strategic methods, to enhance our communications with the public in general, highlighting different aspects of town operations. A lot of those efforts have been, or all those efforts have been led by Valerie Clemmie, who was focused on managing our social media presence and developing informative advertisements, commercials, and videos to distribute to the residents and other interested parties. And this evening, we have, I think, our first feature presentation about a particular operation, which is Winter Operations, starring Highway Division Manager Nick Repetta. A lot of support in editing came from Mark Sarah with SMC, so it was definitely a team effort. I wanted to thank everyone and encourage residents, this will be posted on the website and shared prior to any major snow events, but our hope is to better inform residents about when, where, and how we conduct our winter operations on the roadways.
Okay.
Well, we prepared for winter storms right after the last snowstorm of the prior season. Our mechanics worked diligently all summer to prep snow and ice equipment, whether it be plows, sanders, salt trucks, front-end loaders. There's about 320 lane miles of town-owned roads that we treat. There's about 12 to 15 miles of private streets, and 24 to 25, 30 miles of sidewalks that we maintain, and all town-owned facilities and parking lots. We maintain it with eight salt trucks that hold eight to 10 yards apiece. Each salt truck is calibrated to 250 pounds per lane mile with computerized spread controls. They're all equipped with underbody scrapers, front plows, 80-gallon calcium tanks that are on the side for pretreatment of salt. We have three front-end loaders in-house, and three sidewalk plows. Prior to any snowfall, we go out and pretreat roads, we use two different methods. One is applying road salt at a real low setting with the spinner, so the salt drops on the road and doesn't bounce and scatter to the gutters where it's unusable. But we also, in the last year or two, have instituted salt brine liquid trials in conjunction with the city of Worcester. Salt brine is a 23% saltwater solution that is sprayed on the road in a liquid form 24 to 30 hours prior to a storm, so it's allowed to dry, and that way it doesn't scatter off the road, it dries on the road, those little white lines you see prior to a snowstorm. We would start plowing when there's a plowable amount of snow. With any storm, it's changeable, so we utilize underbody scrapers prior to pulling the trigger for a full plowing operation. Every salt truck that we have is equipped with an underbody, which means we don't have to put the front plows on the trucks, and while they're applying salt to the road, they can clear the lanes. By rule of thumb, a full plowing operation in full force would start between two and three inches. For post-treatment of a storm, every road gets treated with a salt and/or salt-calcium-chloride application. The dirt roads, the private streets, if they're not a paved road, would get a mix of 50/50 salt and sand. Sidewalk operation would go into effect after a plowing operation, and that entails between 25 and 30 miles of sidewalks that are plowed. The average cost varies greatly depending on the storm, the length, the size, how many contractors, but it could be anywhere from 12,000 to 20,000 per inch. Residents could help us by shoveling their fire hydrants, keeping their catch basins clear. There's over 5,000 catch basins in the town, and that's an undertaking just to open up the problem areas for us. Plowing snow out in the road is definitely something we don't like to have happen. Not only does it make a hazard to drivers, but it also hinders the ability to keep roads clear.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I have anything else this evening?
Okay. All right, are we ready to move on to our next item? It's a tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors. Gentlemen, would you like to come up?
Thank you.
Let's see if we can come up with an appropriate soundtrack for next year, like "The Bride of Valkyries" or something from "The Wizard of Oz." Good evening. I'm Chris Reedy, I'm the principal assessor for the town, and this is Frank Stella, a two-time member of the board. He had been on a good while ago, and then got selected for the library committee, in the library building committee, and then after that was done, he wanted to come back. It's a big plus having him here, because he's willing to go out and look at the houses for the abatement applications in January. And it makes for a much easier meeting, and it's very good public relations when they have two people showing up, just to say, okay, fine, let's talk, let's listen to you, and then make our own decisions. So, what we're here, the two main purposes of what we have to do is, we discuss the tax rate for the forthcoming year. There's a decision to be made by the board of selecting one of four, and actually effectively three, different types of classification procedure. And then the other thing is to approve the amount of the excess levy capacity, that is how much above the actual levy that the town is being raising in taxes. Historically, Shrewsbury has always had, tried to keep the number as low as possible. There are some towns I've talked to, and they have 5 million, 6 million, or more, different town policies. So what you have in front of you is the proposed tax rate, and in summary, the value changes for fiscal year 2020. The basic information has been sent in to the Department of Revenue for approval, which includes the new growth, includes the new values, and there's just some finalization in a couple of the forms, which probably should be taken care of by tomorrow morning. At that point, they will issue, you know, the approval of the tax rate. What we're proposing, the board, is a single rate of $12.47 per thousand dollars of valuation, and that is 10 cents lower than what it was last year. The amount of new growth is $1,121,615, and, you know, a decent chunk of that was driven by the finalization of the Lakeside Commons project. As an aside, the apartments, which were a separate piece of it, sold for $77 million, and that's something we will look at next year, because it took place in fiscal in 2019. The excess capacity at this point is $56,047.76, in line with what we've had in the past. This hearing allows communities to have separate tax rate for different classes of property, allows the Board of Selectmen to make a decision whether or not to shift the tax burden for one class of property to another. Statute provides a number of, like three things, it allows 150% levy shift to the commercial sector, and there's also an allowance for a residential shift, neither of which we really vote to support. The main reason being is that, on the residential portion, that's most applicable for communities that have a large amount of residential second homes and the like, mountain communities, the Cape, South Shore properties. We're not in that situation, it's, there are so few second homes, if that, that are owned in town, it would be almost impossible to administer, it'd make a minuscule difference in the tax rate and the tax burden. The commercial industrial shift will be allowed up to 150% of the tax levy to be shifted to the commercial properties. In the long run, what that does, it reduces the value of the commercial tax base, and the residential portion ends up picking it up. It's been popular in a lot of cities, however, it's not something that we recommend due to the size. The amount of commercial property and industrial property is about 12.7% of the total burden to tax, and that would not make much of a difference. The summary of the, you have the simple, single rate being the simplest, we ran the value of the town, the town budget to be raised is $80,193,360. The value of the town went up to $6,947,710. It's been a significant change. The average value for a single house in Shrewsbury increased from $453,000 to $478,600. I took a look at extracting new construction from it, and it just slightly changed the value. Prices continue to rise, overall, the residential portion, which includes apartments, rose The average real estate tax bill will change, it'll increase by $269.57 based on the average property. The part, the override amount for the Lake Street, Beale Street property has taken an effect, and this has actually been a pleasant surprise, in that the tax rate went down. The market's been strong, so we've been very, very fortunate. In the information you've been given, there's a summary just showing total single-family values, number of single-family houses, running from fiscal '12 to fiscal 2020 to the current. We went from 9,098 single-family houses up to 9,364,000 houses. Average value went from 372,600 to 478,600, and obviously, the starting year, fiscal '12, was during the recession, when values across the board were down. Going into the, we discussed the commercial, you know, industrial shift, which, again, the board does not recommend for the two reasons above. There is a portion where the commercial tax valuation can be shifted within the commercial group, and the qualifications for that are million-dollar properties, properties of a million dollars value and less, and that they had, I think, as 20 employees or less in the town. The Department of Revenue does not recommend this, because it's, A, difficult to control, and B, you're faced with the situation of giving a Starbucks, a Bank of America, they're under a million dollars, they meet the threshold, you would be giving them a tax break, and the tax break on this would go to an owner out of town, out of state. So, in all fairness, it's not advantageous for the town to do that. The last exemption is open space, which was, and open space is defined by the Department of Revenue, is vacant land, could be left overland from a subdivision and the like, not the open space that you were talking about prior. And what they want to do, they say, is, they prefer not to have anything classified that way, it makes things simpler to keep track of, and it doesn't contribute to value. So it's a little tidying up by them. So that's the basis, the basics of the presentation. I mean, if you have any questions on any of the presentation, any of the values, what we see going forward, we'll be happy to talk with you.
Sure. Any questions? Comments? Thank you. Doesn't change too much from year to year, is it?
No, it doesn't. I mean, I was gonna say, we could get music if you'd like.
Well, without, without big shift in the, in the commercial-industrial sector, it really doesn't make any sense to do the shifting, because a big shift in the commercial-industrial really only results in a small shift or benefit to the residential.
Correct.
It just makes us less competitive in the commercial market.
Exactly.
And just as a way of history, Mr. LeBeau will probably remember when we stopped with the open space exemption, because we realized after a period of time that people were just using the exemption to pull the land until they got a really good price, and then they sold it, so it didn't have the long-term benefit that, that we had been hoping we would get. So, having said that, if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing, we're opening up to the public. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to be heard on this? Okay. Here being none, we can close the hearing, right?
Okay, then you make a motion to accept the same rate.
Right. Okay. Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
I'm sorry, we have a motion.
Okay, so all those in favor of closing the hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board adopt the residential factor of one, that the board vote not to adopt residential, small, commercial exemption or open space exemptions, and vote not to shift any tax burden from the residential to the CIP class, and to authorize the Board of Assessors to electronically sign the LA 5 to DLS.
Second. Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? Here being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board adopt the residential factor of one, that the board vote not to adopt residential, small, commercial exemption or open space exemptions, and vote not to shift any tax burden from the residential to the CIP class, and to authorize the Board of Assessors to electronically sign the LA 5 to DLS.
Second. Okay, we have motion second, any further discussion? Here being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work on this.
I appreciate it. Department of Revenue has changed their mind again, and after authorizing the electronic signatures, now requires hard signature.
Oh, really?
So, we do have the form to pass and get the signatures, which we'll scan and submit to them tonight. We would expect within a day or two to have everything wrapped up in the final approval for the new tax rate.
Okay.
Assistant Member? Second.
Second. Oh, okay.
Mr. Reedy, how has the apartment subject of the, of the market held up? I know we had the sale down.
Held up is not the correct word. It's, no, it's expanded. It continues to expand. Jim actually has some numbers on a new apartment down in his neighborhood where he works, and the, there've been some sales, most of them unfortunately have been, you know, for this year's tax base. According to 2019, we had the sale of the Arbor, the former Haynes Farm, that sold in a package with five other properties, it sold for $61,500. We had the, obviously, the sale of 35 Harrington at $77 million, and the Madison Place properties, there were two, there was one in South Grove, one here in Shrewsbury, and that sold for, the RP sold for $25 million. In talking with the buyer of the property, he did, he said that there was a 1031 exchange, they had an offer they couldn't refuse, literally, in an office building, they bought for $60,000 or $90,000 in the 60s, and they were offered $28,000, $29,000 to $200,000. So, they took it. What we did is we adjusted that sale by the offset capital gains, which brought the assessed value of about 95% of the price. We still continue to see increases, and I was working on a comparison with apartment buildings that have, you know, predominantly one-bedroom versus two-bedroom units, and David Snowden has graciously volunteered to help, and he talked me with that, too. That will, won't make a heck of a lot of difference in the assessed values, but they're coming and complaining that, well, you know, this one next door, what I'm competing with, their assessment is lower than mine, and they're saying, yes, but they have, you know, 70% one-bedrooms, and you have 100% or 80% or something, two-bedrooms. It just makes it easy, and we can't disclose the income, but by having a basis, by able to say, here's your ratio, it makes it much easier, and that saves us going to the ballot tax board.
Great. Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, Jim?
Yeah, suppose. See if my back holds up. Thank you very much.
Okay, next order of business is to review an act on the fiscal policies. Mrs. Mizikah, do you want to?
Yes, so, last year, we had a little change in the normal practice, where we established the financial policies, which are more steady, long-term policy statements of the board to include policies within reserves, including general stabilization, free cash, operating budget, and enterprise and utility reserves, and then submission of the budget, the budget message, capital planning policy, and debt management policy. Staff have not made any changes to these policies, but we wanted to bring them back to the board at the outset of the budget process to check in with you and review them to make sure that there weren't any changes. We don't recommend making any changes, but certainly are open to any comments that you may have on them. At the following meeting, we'll review more narrowly focused fiscal policies for the FY21 budget process, after we review the revenue manual tonight and begin to work our way through the budget process. So, happy to take any questions, or see if there are any things the board members would like to discuss within the policies.
Okay, any questions on this?
Comfortable.
Okay, good on that.
Can I just, Mr. Samia? Yeah, just a conceptual question, so these financial policies, when we get a bond rating, like for, for Beale, what is it, what do they, how do they help us, is it part of, was it part of the conversation, or how does that work in the overall structure when we get, for bonds?
Yeah, so there are, I think, two aspects. One is having fiscal policies in place, written and agreed upon, gets you so much credit within the process, within a quantitative score, and then showing progress towards or meeting those policies once they're in place, gets you additional points within the rating process. So, we have both of those in place, we certainly haven't met We certainly haven't met any of the, the full policies on the reserve side, but do meet our debt management, budget submission, and capital plan policies. So, they were certainly a beneficial part of the favorable bond rating.
So, do they look at the, the policies themselves? Do they get that granular and then keep track of that? Is that something on an annual basis we have to report to the bond agencies, or how does that?
So, we do annual disclosures to the bond rating agencies. We don't go into annually, we don't go into the level of showing our progress or where we stand with them, but they do review our policies to make sure that they're at least in keeping with the general state statutes on the debt management and best business practices or GFOA standards on the stabilization of reserve policies.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next order of business is to discuss the FY-2021 revenue manual. Are you doing that?
Yep. So, as it gets pulled up, we do have a few slides to help walk through. I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge all the work that David Snowden, the assistant to the town manager, takes in, in pouring through these details and putting this document in place, takes hours upon hours and is a work in progress, something that gets improved upon every year. Fiscal year twenty-one was the first year for the revenue manual, and as we stated to you at that time, every year, we'll look to improve upon and enhance the level of information that's provided, and I certainly think Dave had the lead, or I know Dave had the lead in doing that this year, and providing some enhanced information within the details that we provide in the local receipts and some other aspects of the document. So, Dave, if you don't mind switching to the, the first slide. So, the first aspect that I'll review with you briefly is the tax levy for fiscal year twenty-one. We just went through the, the rate setting process for fiscal year twenty with the assessor that occurs this, at this point in the year, every year. And as we look forward to twenty-one, we're using sound forecasting tools and also state statutes to guide us and let us know how much money we'll have in place, at least at this point in the year. We have to be conservative at this point in the budget process, too. We don't know things like state aid. We don't know specifically the types of requests that will come in from various departments, and we just want to make sure that we don't get too far along in the budget process and realize that, that we're facing a deficit for the upcoming year. So, that brings us to a conservative stance at this point. However, on the, on the tax levy, you know, we're confident in our calculations. They come all through statutorily, so we are proposing to raise the tax levy by two and a half percent, which is allowed under state law, and utilizing eight hundred thousand dollars in new growth. And then beyond the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, we have known debt exclusions through our debt service schedule that have been approved by voters at the ballot, and that will strike the largest change year over year from fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-one, which will be the amount that's raised for debt service purposes for the Beal Early Childhood Center, changing from nine hundred and sixty-three thousand to almost a little over four-point-two million dollars. So, the total change in tax levy that, that's estimated for fiscal year twenty-one changes from eighty million, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand to eighty-five million, seven-hundred-and-sixteen The next largest area of, of revenues comes from aid from the Commonwealth, and it's broken up into six general categories and further detailed out and analyzed through the revenue manual. Unrestricted general government aid is just that, and it's used for a variety of purposes, and we've seen constant and steady growth. The Baker-Pleito administration has committed to municipalities that general government aid will increase at the same rate as state revenues, and they've held true on that promise. We're a little more conservative than that at this stage of the budget process. We know their budget will be issued sometime near the end of February, and we'll update those figures when available. We also have, I think, a little bit more steady ground in fiscal year twenty-one with the Education Act that's currently making its way through the legislature to help us understand the additional school aid, which will not be a lot, but is around a hundred and eighty thousand for the, based on the per pupil minimum aid of, of thirty dollars per student, and bringing our total state aid, which does include Chapter Ninety, up to twenty-seven-point-five million, which is just a slight increase over twenty-seven-point-four that we use in FY-20 budget. Thereafter, our next largest category is funds raised through various rates of the utilities within the community, water, solid waste, sewer, stormwater, and then various sources within those different utilities. Utilities represent almost seventeen-point-four million dollars of the eighty-five million dollar revenue stream, and based upon the rate structures that we have in place and some analysis that we've done for later discussion this evening on pay as you throw, we would see an increase in those revenues, up about three hundred thousand dollars year over year. Local receipts, which are fees that are raised through various statutory or, or local initiative purposes, total just over eleven-point-two million dollars for our planning purposes for FY-21. The largest category is motor vehicle excise tax, and we're starting to see at least enough signs within the motor vehicle excise numbers to be concerned that year-over-year growth will not continue. While you, interest rates remain favorable for consumers, there's only so many new cars I think you buy, and the nature of motor vehicle excises is that it declines, and that the first year that you would purchase a brand-new vehicle is the greatest percentage that the value of that vehicle is taxed at, and it slowly, or actually rapidly declines over the next three years and then flattens out. So, not only the number of vehicles that individuals are purchasing, but the life, the age of those vehicles, from the data that we see, seems to be aging, and that makes us a little less confident going in, and, and we're actually projecting a slight decrease, at least at this point in fiscal year twenty-one. One of the challenges, as you see, makes up over half of this category, is we don't do our billing for motor vehicle excise tax for fiscal year twenty until February of two thousand and twenty. So, we don't have a lot of great data for, for the current year, but, you know, this is where we rest, at least right now, a little less than six million. There's also a decrease year over year from, actually, the actuals from FY-19 to what were recommended and revised the budget to in FY-20 for the landfill ash revenue that we receive, and that's based upon detailed conversations with the landfill operator and understanding how much materials they anticipate bringing in, in both the material metals recovery facility and the ash itself. So, that's actually quite a challenge, a reduction year-over-year projections of about three hundred thousand dollars. In the long run, it's good for the life and duration of the landfill. There's almost, only so much capacity there, but it's a challenge to lose three hundred thousand dollars in an eleven-million-dollar line, and it's a substantial change, about ten percent of all new revenues that we bring in through the tax levy. So, we've modeled and used various forecasting methods throughout. I think local receipts is the most comprehensive forecasting model that we get into within the revenue manual, and it's all very clearly explained. So, move on to the next category. Free cash, it's certainly a revenue source that we've used in various forms over a number of years. There will be significant change in the amount of free cash that's spent in FY-21. A primary driver behind that is now having the water enterprise and not having to shift revenues from free cash back into a water system improvement account. We will maintain the posture that set forth in the, the policies that the board just affirmed with retaining at least two and a half percent of the proposed budget within free cash moving from year to year, which puts us at about three-point-two million dollars that will be left after all expenditures are made at the annual town meeting in the spring. And then, we're anticipating, you know, this number, the one-point-eight number, being used for capital purposes, and we'll have to make consideration for other transfers like stabilization and other warrant articles and funding requests that comes in through departments throughout the course of the budget cycle. So, this number may ultimately go up, but this is what we're pretty much putting on the table for capital at this point in the budget process. So, although, you know, free cash is, was certified as historic or the highest number it has been, I would anticipate that we would see this level offer slightly decline as we, year-over-year, move more money out of this reserve, free cash into the stabilization account per the policies set by the board.
Please interrupt for a second. So, by moving the money into those other accounts and reducing free cash, our reserves aren't necessarily going down.
Nope.
They're just being put in a different place.
Yep.
And they're, and they're more restricted, but it's, it's not like we're getting into a difficult situation with free cash.
Not at all. No. I mean, this is, you know, I guess I should have been a little clear. We, we are indicating that we are planning for a reduction in free cash. It won't be a surprise once it occurs. If you look at free cash after water rates were moved from FY-19 and in FY-18 to FY-19, the two most recent certified years, the only year-over-year reduction in free cash was the, roughly the amount of money, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that we moved from free cash into stabilization. So, you're absolutely right. It is still part of our reserves, and it's actually kind of further locked up for long-term financial security purposes.
Thank you.
Free cash is also utilized to reduce the general tax rate and tax, general tax levy, the amount of money that we need to raise through the tax rate. Five hundred thousand in free cash is utilized there, and we also receive payments to reduce the levy from Selco from both the light side and the cable revenue, which brings the total to one-point-five million in levy reduction purposes, which is a specific category that DOR allows us to do to help keep the tax rate reasonable within. I think this is the next-to-last slide or final slide, just a small category of other funds, miscellaneous sources that we use. The largest item within this category is four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars that the Light Department provides the town to cover debt service that are on our books that is incurred by them for various capital improvement purposes, so total four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in this category. So, again, just to reiterate, you know, the revenue manual will be available online within the next week or so for everyone to review. It's our starting point for fiscal year twenty-one in the budget process to signal and indicate how much revenue we will have as we make our way through and make initial determinations on the type of budgets that will be presented. This will certainly be quite a routine year, nothing exciting or special from the revenue side. We'll continue to look at local receipts to make sure that we're squeezing as much out of them as we can, but not overly aggressive as we have been in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I really like the way this is organized, this presentation, because when you read it as a narrative in the revenue manual, I tend to have to take notes to try to keep everything together as far as the revenue sources and how you group them, and I just think, if you did this, this is great. Thank you, David. It was so nice to see it all together in one place. I like the presentation. I think it'd be easy, too, for, like, just the public to follow, because, you know, we look at it all the time, and so it's supposed to make sense, and then I still find that sometimes it's confusing. So, I think that people who don't look at it, except for maybe once a year, will really appreciate the way that it's broken out this year.
Thank you. Mr. LeBeau?
Well, I just, I mean, we were talking a little bit about reducing free cash by increasing stabilization, and the comment was made that it locks it up a little, it's a two-thirds vote for stabilization as opposed to majority. The other thing is, and it doesn't, it's never affected us, stabilization is available to a town meeting all year round. Free cash is not, and if there was ever a problem in certifying free cash, I mean, that money from July first to the day that it's, it's certified is not available to us. If we ever had an issue, and I, I can speak from experience, some of the smaller towns don't get it done as quickly, that can become an issue. So, it's, it's another good reason to move it into stabilization.
Great. Thank you.
Just one quick comment. I think it's a great document, a great presentation this year. I think it does a great job of putting it all together in a succinct fashion for anyone to review and get a great understanding of. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right. Move on into the year and the budget for next year. Okay. I'm going to ask that we hold item eight until the end of the meeting, because I'm going to have to recuse myself on that, the Insurance Advisory Committee recommendation. Okay. Item nine is to review an act on a road closure request by Richard Reckitt for Grove Street from Hawthorne to Grafton Street on Thursday. It's actually a change from what's printed in the agenda, instead of being, it would be Thursday, the twenty-first, which would be next week, with a rain date of the twenty-second. I'm assuming this went through all of the various departments that would be affected, and this is agreeable to them, Mr. Rep.
Excuse me. That is correct. Speaking with the School Department, they don't have an issue moving it forward as well.
Okay. Good. Okay. Any other questions? So, then, could I have a motion to approve the road closure on the twenty-first with a rain date of the twenty-second?
Come over.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Okay. Next order of business is just an update on Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. We've talked about that a lot since last spring and into the fall, when we were talking about the need for additional resources for additional staff, and looking forward to what we could develop as a long-range plan so that we could see with some certainty of where this was heading. I'm just going to briefly touch on some of the things that were in the memo. One thing that was very clear is that the social service needs of the community are growing. There's a lot of unmet need out there. The clinician is going to help that quite a bit. One of the other things that's interesting is that what we're contracted for and the amount, the amount of services that are provided and the breadth of the services that are provided to the town by Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services is actually greater than what the contract said. We're getting a big bang for our buck, because as the need has grown, they've been able to figure out ways to, to, to be able to address some of those concerns. So, we're getting, we're getting a lot of value for what we spent. But having said that, I think Mrs. Cassavian and I actually, and I should have said, have met several times with Christine Mori, the, the Executive Director at Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, to come up with this information at some point, probably for next year, Mr. Mizuka. I think that contract needs to be revisited, because it's essentially the same contract since, I think, nineteen ninety-seven. May not change a lot, but it, but I think it will. One of the other takeaways is that the funding for that Master's Level Clinician, which we funded for a partial year, I think we're going to find that we're going to need to keep that going to be able to keep the service level up and the, and the backlog down. Also, the senior needs assessment is being done, and hopefully, we're going to have a, a report, at least a draft by, at the latest, mid-January. But I think from our discussions that we, we most likely will be getting a request, and we might bring it forward ourselves after seeing the report, that a request for funding for an additional staff person just to meet those needs of the seniors who aren't being met. So, that's where generally where we are right now. Mrs. Cassavian, if you'd like to add anything?
And you did a great job summarizing it. You did a great job summarizing it. When we spoke probably two months ago, you asked for corners. These are the corners.
Right.
So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. We've had multiple meetings with Christine Maury. She's, I think what I, the biggest takeaway for me is they're not saying no to people. When people or cases or families show up on the doorstep of SYFS, it's because they have nowhere else to go. And regardless of what the contract says, SYFS doesn't turn them away. And so the need is out there and they're trying to cobble together some way to meet that need. And I think that when we see that backlog of people waiting for counseling that the master's level clinician will address, that's the result of, in some ways, just having so much on their plate that they're just not able to get to everything with the staff that they have. And so I think I've said this before, I think that we are beyond the point of deciding whether or not we want to get into being a social service agency and providing that. I think we're there already and we need to appropriately provide resources for SYFS so that they can meet the needs of everyone in the community from the youngest to the oldest of the residents. And I think as the senior population grows, we're starting to see more and more need there that perhaps hasn't been addressed before but needs to be. And at minimum, there needs to be some line item increase, whether it's not just an add-on or last, like its own article at town meeting, but it's something that becomes a regular part of the budget and whether SYFS becomes part of those budget hearings that we have in March or they're coming in on a more regular basis to update the board and the community so that there's a better understanding of the value that they are providing, I think that those are all appropriate ways to go about making sure that funding is secured for them. So much of what they do for revenue is through fundraising and it's difficult, I think, to continue to meet the needs of the community given the funding that they're receiving right now.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you both very much.
Okay. Well, that's where we are for the moment and we'll keep you updated as things progress. Okay. Item 11 is to review an act designed in municipal vulnerability preparedness to action grant application. Mr. Mizikar, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yes, for that?
So in fiscal year 2018 and 2019, the town developed its vulnerability plan as it relates to climate change. And now we're seeking funding to implement the greatest, or the most, the highest need vulnerability areas that were identified in that plan. And we're seeking, or developed a grant application that includes four projects. Those projects include the following: the modernization of the existing sanitary sewer overflow alarm system, requesting $200,000; preliminary evaluations of pump stations in proximity to the flood zone, which is $125,000; stormwater best management practices evaluations, which is a $38,000 request; and bylaw and regulations review to review subdivision rules and regulations, site plan rules and regulations to understand and enhance them related to stormwater impacts and other low-impact development techniques, which is a $47,400 request. So we're allowed to request up to $2 million in funding. These are our four primary project areas that will be very effective in helping us deal with changes in weather patterns and climate. And we are looking for the board's support in submitting this application.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. Were you finished? Okay. Okay. So we have motion second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. And is there something we have to sign?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We can grab that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Before we move on regarding Green Communities Act, sometime in the coming weeks, could you just give us a written update, Chiven, of where we are in those various projects and so forth? Thank you.
Okay. Next order of business is to review an act on a one-day beer and wine request for Moore Milla Rotary Club of Shrewsbury for the Yuletide Market Event that's going to be held on Saturday, December 7th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. Any further discussion? It being none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye opposed, so voted. Okay. Except for number eight, that's it. Oh, no. Pay as you throw. Sorry. I thought this was going too fast. Okay. I got ahead of myself there. Okay. So, Mr. Mizikar, do you want?
Yeah. So the board will recall your last meeting, we reviewed an analysis that Mr. Snowden prepared related to the projected cost increases for the solid waste collection program. And specifically, just wanted to reiterate that this is not a hauler-based change, it's really hauler-agnostic. It's related to the overall changes in the solid waste and general market conditions. The change actually is more of a factor between those market conditions in 2014 when the previous contract was signed and 2018, 2019, when the current contract was put in place. So part of that discussion centered on the $243,000 in additional revenue that was proposed, which would bring us back closer to having the tax rate and the revenue generated through this program, specifically 50-50 split covering the cost and the projected expenses of the program. So the board asked us to do a couple of things. One, identify what $243,000 is equivalent to in the budget process and doing an analysis of a gradual implementation of those fees rather than a single fee increase. So as it relates to the $243,000, I think most simply put, it's roughly equal to the cost of one patrol officer, one firefighter, and one laborer. So add the cost of those three positions together, you know, that's $243,000 whenever you look at the average hourly wage and the average fringe benefit package for those positions. So just a couple other ways I think we can compare them. The $243,000, as we discussed in the revenue discussion for FY '21, represents about 9% of all new revenue that will be raised through the tax levy. And that is certainly a substantial amount and would be very beneficial to help us continue to meet the current service levels across the community when we're dealing with such limited resources. I'm happy to answer any other questions. We have a couple of slides that are prepared that walk through, you know, incremental rollout of this rate if the board is interested in discussing that any further. And look forward to any other comments on this recommendation to increase the fees.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion at some point this evening that we adopt the manager's recommendation. I have spent probably too much time with the manager on this matter of slicing it from one way to another. I think the original recommendation that came with this program of having a 50-50 split bag cost with the tax levy is a reasonable one. I had hoped to, over time, move us off to a 100% funded program through bag, but those costs are just beyond outrageous. That's not the way to go. The flip side is I don't think we should break from the 50% subsidy of the tax rate because the opportunity costs to what we've been talking about over the umpteen years, I think, are real. It's not like their add-ons are nice to have, but an additional patrolman or two is not a luxury, in my opinion. And we've already sought a federal grant and somehow received it for additional firefighters and there is a municipal match to that. So I think after seeing the opportunity cost analysis of where this money would actually be going and then factoring out how you could do it on a stepped basis, which is then just, you know, it's just to me, turning yourself into a pretzel versus the extreme of going to a fully funded program. The recommendation is not an easy one, it's not a comfortable one, it's not a popular one, but at the end of the day, I think it's the rational, right thing to do.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I had a couple of comments. I have to agree with what Mr. Kane just said. I can't even fathom how much time I've spent thinking about and talking to the manager about trash bags. No one, including myself, wants to have to pay more for anything, but unfortunately, I think that's the place we find ourselves. I like that Mr. Mizikar broke this down into patrol officer, firefighter, highway laborer. I actually went through the capital plan and I looked at some items that would total roughly $200,000, just to see the kinds of things that we would be unable to purchase. One of them was a replacement of a marked police vehicle and an unmarked police vehicle that came out to about that amount. One was replacing fire alarms at Coolidge School for $203,000, replacing a highway dump truck in Sander from, that was 1999, purchased, or a backhoe from 1991 for the highway department. Repaving the drive at Floral Street School is $120,000. There's just so much that needs to be done to keep a community like this running and people expect a certain level of service. And to do that, there has to be a certain level of revenue. And we just sat through the revenue manual presentation that basically shows that there's not a magic pot of money. Things aren't going to be increasing or growing to the extent where we aren't going to miss $243,000. We just are. It's not, raising the rate of the trash bag or the fee of the trash bag isn't going to make the drawstrings rip less frequently, it's not going to provide a stronger bag, it's the same bag, it's just that we have to come together as a community and share the burden of the cost of the solid waste program if we want to have the opportunity to do things like fund additional firefighters, fund an additional clinician for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, make sure that our highway department has the equipment that they need when the snow starts to fall. And I think that if we further reduce revenue by not appropriately raising the price of the trash bags to cover the increase in collection costs, then we're just limiting our ability to react and provide the level of service that the community expects. And so while it's distasteful, unsavory, and ill-timed, I think it is the right thing to do. So.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. LeBout?
Like everyone else, we've all spent a great deal of time on this and, you know, we've heard that several folks are not happy with this concept. I simply look at it that X number of years ago when we were presented, I believe it was when we left the first wheel-abrader contract when we were a tier-one community, which gained us preferential pricing. And I, if I remember correctly, we all knew that when that contract went away, it was unlikely that that preferential treatment was going to be offered for us in contract two. The reason we received that preferential treatment, for lack of a better word, was there was a critical mass needed to get the incinerator up and running, that you needed enough communities to subscribe. So as part of a, you know, a sales thing to get people to sign on, they said if you sign on early, we'll give you this discounted rate, so to speak, as opposed to tier-one and tier, tier-two and tier-three communities. So when that happened, when we switched and went to the new contract, our prices went up dramatically and the decision was made to impose a bag fee to try to take some of the curse of that off, off the tax levy. X number of years go by, we've been hovering at that 50-50 and it's been eroding a little bit, actually, or the tax, the tax contribution has been increasing, the value of the bag fee has been eroding a little bit. And we've just cruised, I mean, we've, we've absorbed that. But now this year, again, a new contract, this time with a hauler, not with the incinerator, with a marked increase, and again, as we keep mentioning, this is hauler-agnostic. This is based on the lowest bid we received. Had we gone with other haulers, and some people think we should have, the amount of this delta would have even been greater, we would have been looking for even more money. So again, we're at another point in time when we've had a, you know, not an incremental increase in cost, we've had a dramatic increase in cost. And we don't have many options. And this seems to be, I don't even want to call it the, you know, the best of the bad options. It's a, it's a business, it's an economic reality. And lastly, I've had some people come up to me and say, "Well, John, why didn't you guys ramp it up a little bit at a time?" Well, because, one, we didn't really have that need through the years. And truthfully, if you really think about it, if we had raised bag fees at some point in time in the past before, whenever, if it is going to happen, people would have actually paid more. So it's, I mean, so some of the people who are telling me, "We don't, we don't, I mean, we're against raising the prices, but if you did it, at least you should have done it in baby steps," are actually, that doesn't make any sense because they're arguing for a position that would have actually taken more money out of their pockets over the years than if, if, by making a large, a larger increase today. So, I mean, for all those reasons, it seems to be the right thing to do, as other members have mentioned. I mean, we've, we've looked at this every which way, the costs have gone up a great deal and we are not in a position to absorb all those costs. Or we lose opportunity costs, as was mentioned, if we roll more of it into the tax levy. So I have no issue with the recommendation as presented to us.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sumi.
I agree with, the comments have been stated by all of my colleagues. The, we understand, or at least going through this, we understand switching haulers, there's been some challenges early on, they've been alleviated, but we continue to hear some feedback from community members and work with, work with waste management. No one ever wants to pay more for services, we understand that. But to me, it comes down to cost-benefit and long-term vibrancy of things that we feel are important in looking at priorities. State revenues, we know, longer term, aren't going to be providing a pot of gold for us and ultimately it comes down to the communities to figure out how to best provide services to their residents. I look at our most recent town meeting on October 21st and I look at a couple of the articles that are there. In particular, for example, the Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services appropriation, looking at additional services, the clinician for the remainder of the fiscal year, together with this need study at the senior center. These are real needs that our community has and we're just hitting at the tip of the iceberg, seeing the social and emotional health and well-being issues that not only our seniors have, but our school-age kids do as well. These will cost money and to me, that's a priority when I look at $242,000 or as the number would go up over the next four years. To me, these needs are a priority over that amount. And again, no one wants to pay more, but when you look at the SAFER grant, and early on, it's true, we do get 75% of the freight covered, but those four additional firefighters by year four, I believe, are covered fully by the town. And that is a priority and public safety is a priority. So when I looked at all the options and clearly being mindful that paying additional amounts for trash is probably not first on someone's list, and I know that based on prior town surveys, trash is clearly one of the most valued services, looking at not only now but short-term and longer-term for the town, I think that this is where we'd want to increase the fee so we can provide the other services that I think our community expects, but also have a priority to be, those needs to be filled.
Okay. Thank you. Try not to repeat what everybody else said, but one of the things I think is worth noting is that we're doing this bag fee, the setting, the rates have been set so that they don't have to be raised again for the next five years. Because if we don't, we're talking 243 now, for some reason I thought it was 320, but whatever. We're going to be talking over $500,000 at the end of the contract because of the escalators that are in there. So the problem is going to get bigger and I don't see how we can absorb in the, in the rest of the operating budget, that kind of, that kind of, an increase in cost. of the operating budget that kind of, an increase in cost. I've spent a lot of time looking at this, as I know all of you have, trying to figure out ways to mitigate the impact, but I don't think there is a way to mitigate the impact. Either we're going to pay it through a bag fee, or we're going to pay it through the tax levy, which, again, there are going to be things we're not going to be able to do. I did speak to quite a few people in a few small groups, and explained it, and asked what their perception was of the options that we have, either going with the bag fee, going to the tax levy, splitting it, and I forgot what the last one was, but I didn't, most people, you know, they didn't want to see the fee go up. There were people, some people didn't care that the cost was going up, they didn't want to see the fee go up. So, I'm not sure how they thought we would pay for it. However, there were people who said, "Well, the costs have gone up, so we're going to have to pay for it, we're going to have to pay more for it." But almost to a person, they said, "We don't really like the idea that the bag fee is going up, but we think you'd have to do it." And I have people who, I mean, really did not want to see the bag fee go up, but recognized the need and said, "Do it, and don't try to phase it in. Just do it, and let's be done with it, and we'll move on." So, it actually surprised me a little bit that that was the recommendation, but I think people realize that there's a cost here that has to be addressed. So, I agree with what all of you have said. I think it's important to note, at least I think I'm right, that this is not going to happen until July 1st.
That's correct.
So, it's going to happen, but people don't need to run out and buy cases of bags, which I've actually heard that started happening already in some of the supermarkets, which is fine. People want to stock up on bags, that's their right, that's their business, but this is going to happen on July 1st. So, having said that, and agreeing with what all of you have said, that leads us to, do you, Mr. Mizikar, want a vote from the board to endorse the bag fees effective July 1st?
I mean, that'd be helpful. Supporting the recommendation as presented would help us walk through the rest of the budget process and explain the vetting that we've done.
One other thing I would like to say, there are people who would like to see the percentage of bags being paid go down, which is, in other words, we wouldn't raise the fee. There are other people who want to see it go up because they think that, you know, other town services are more important than this, but I disagree with that. First of all, I think we have to keep it at a reasonable level that's affordable and doesn't encourage people to find other means of disposing of their trash that we might not find beneficial to the town. I just think we have to try to keep a balance. And the genesis of the bag fee was, as Mr. LeBeau said, to offset the disposal costs that had increased dramatically, almost doubled when we started the program. And that was the genesis of the implementation. Board of Health had recommended for several years that we should go to Page's Throw to get our recycling up, and the manager and the boards at the time agreed that we should wait until we absolutely had to do it. And we did it when we had to do it, and we're in another position now where we have to raise the fees. We didn't do it for 12 years because we didn't have to. So, having said all that, Ms. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, I just have, I have one hesitation about voting tonight. It's the agenda item itself. It says discussion. It doesn't say review and act.
Okay.
And I just wouldn't want to get hung up on any kind of procedural issue.
Right.
So, I don't want that to, that I'm having second thoughts, or I want to punt it. If it said review and act, I'd love voting, but I'm just a little-
Right, because that wasn't the original plan. Okay.
I'm a little concerned that some folks might object to that.
We'll carry it to the 26th. Okay. Okay. But we have consensus that this is the way we're going to go. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. LeBeau. Okay. So, move down to correspondence quickly. Item 14 is an email dated October 21st from State Representative Kane regarding seven Boston Turnpike, again, following up on the condition of that building and trying to get it back into a productive state. And she had requested information of what the onus are happening with this property going forward. So, noted, item 15 is an email dated October 21st from James Nagangast of 15 Wesleyan Street regarding Westboro's climate change action resolution. You don't go into detail on that. I think on the municipal vulnerability and the other things we've done with green communities and such, that we're making the effort to minimize, or at least it's helped to address some of those climate change issues. So, perhaps we can just write a letter quickly, a quick letter explaining that. Item 16 is an email dated October 24th from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the Student Opportunity Act, which the House had passed, seven-year, multi-billion-dollar program, if it makes it through, makes it through the Senate and conference, and hopefully that will help address some of the inequities that are in the system. Item 17 is an email dated October 28th from Naga Butharaju, 12 Heritage Road, requesting a walkway on Crescent Street. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we had another letter of the same topic, and we've asked the departments for input on that, for the necessity and the feasibility of being able to do it, and we're waiting for response. Okay. Item 18 is a letter dated October 29th from Derek Grillo, struck catering for 12C event on November 1st at 206 South Glen Singhamon Avenue. So, noted. Item 19 is a letter dated October 29th from Stephen and Bonnie at 26 Francis Godens regarding Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. And it was a letter essentially thanking Christine Mowry for the work she did related to an issue with inhabitable premises, that residents had to be relocated, and the folks were very appreciative and wanted to make sure that we recognized the work and the assistance that they gave them. So, noted. Item 20 is an email dated October 31st from James Bonafiati regarding missing 78-year-old female. A few weeks ago, this person had apparently become disoriented and lost, and actually got stuck in mud in a pond up off of a wet area off of Walnut Street, and joint effort of the police, the state police, the fire department, with the hovercraft, we were able to safely get her out of that situation and get her home. Item 21 is an email dated November 1st from Juan Vega, Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development regarding the 2019 MAXWORX program. Unfortunately, Mr. Vega said that the town was not awarded the grant for the road project at Centec North, and encouraged us to apply again at the next round, which starts in 2020. Item 22 is an email dated October 31st from Shelley McNeil, Office of Senator Moore, regarding the Senator Moore, Representative Kane, turkey lunch that'll be held on November 25th from 12:00 PM, at 12:00 PM at the senior center, obviously for seniors, for those who would like to go, and anybody who, anyone on the board who is able to go and help out. Item 23 is an email dated November 4th from Mike Perner Jr., Town Historian. It's October 2019 report of historical issues that he dealt with. There were actually 15 activities that he was involved with. So, as we see every month when these comes in, a lot of interest in a lot of this historical, these historical issues. So, I think this has been a really good appointment and seems to be helping out a lot. Item 24 is an email dated November 5th from Nakia Harrow McNeil, PR Restaurants LLC, 550 Contituit Road, Framingham, regarding Panera's new mailing address. So, noted. Item 25 is an email dated November 5th from Colleen Shanahan, 3 Millwood Drive, complaining about an issue with leaf pickup on her property. Mr. Mizikar, you have, you responded, looked into this, have addressed it with waste management, and have informed Ms. Shanahan, and hopefully that situation will not be repeated. Item 26 is a memo dated November 6th from Andy Truman, Town Engineer, Jay Hester, Chief of Police, and Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager, regarding Grove Street Hill realignment. There was a request to look at that road by a resident, and because of the geometry and such, it's an old cow path, probably. In short, they reviewed it. The work that would need to be done is just not feasible, have big impacts on the abutting properties, involve land takings, et cetera. But it's also important to note that there were no accidents recorded in that section of the road for the past five years. So, evidently, people who drive that road are aware and are cautious. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it would make sense, considering 27 to 48 are just ZBA decisions, to receive them all as one?
Yes. That's what I was going to say.
I didn't want to risk that you weren't going to say that.
Oh, no. No, this wouldn't be the first time I've taken them in groups, and I agree with you. Items 27 and 48 are ZBA decisions that go back from April up until the end of September. They just weren't making their way over to the office for a while. And so, again, April 29th, September 30th, ZBA decisions, we'll note them. If anybody has anything in particular they'd like to comment on, fine. Otherwise, we'll just leave it at the noted, and if people want to see them, they're certainly welcome to come into the office and look at them or go to the beginning. Okay. All right. As I said, I'm going to recuse myself on item 8, and so, I will do that and ask Mr. Cassavent to handle that part of the meeting.
Sure. Okay. So, item 8 is to review and act on the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee relative to the Medicare Eligible Retiree Health Insurance Program for calendar year 2020 pursuant to General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 3. Mr. Mizikar.
Madam Chair, this action item is something that the board does every year at this time as we set retiree rates on a calendar year basis, and this year, it's good news. We are seeing modest increases in five of the plans, ranging from 0% to 3.3%, and actually have quite a favorable position as it relates to the Fallon Senior Plan. They're offering two different options moving forward, a network that includes the entire state and one that includes just central Massachusetts, with significant rate reductions ranging from a reduction of 25.3% to 42.9%. So, this is great for retirees and the affordability of the health insurance plans that they take. So, we would look for favorable consideration from the board to adopt these rates for calendar year 2020.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, voted. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I think there's still more I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I never get to say that. There's nothing more to come before the board in regular session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Sure.
It's fun, huh?
Yes.